Meeting at the Fire Commission order at seven P M. We're joining the pledge.
Which is to flag the United States of America. To the all of it, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is consideration of special meeting minutes from December eighteenth. Thank you, Casey, for adding that because I fairly neglected that. Is there a motion?
I like motion when you put the minutes as special names.
A second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Any public comment? Right, hearing none, we'll move on to election officers. Need a chair, vice chair, and a secretary. We'll start with the nomination for a chair.
Brett Ingram.
Brett Ingram, I decline. I nominate Doug.
Second.
What if I decline?
You didn't decline.
If you don't find anybody, then you're stuck with it.
No, that's not how that works. There was a second on Doug.
Oh, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so carried.
So carried.
You think it's sworn in this?
I think it's sworn in again. Um, i- if you would be so kind as to continue, I had to come right from work, so I don't have any notes or anything. Okay, yeah, but at least you have your book of stuff.
All right.
I didn't even make it all.
I'll, I'll continue for the, uh, for tonight.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, I'm going to elect the vice chair.
Brett Ingram. Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And the secretary, Todd.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right, chairman's report, I, I don't have a whole lot to report. I know the, uh, chiefs were supposed to have met with the selectmen and the comptroller yesterday to go over their budgets. I reached out to Dan and was hoping to get some feedback on that meeting I hadn't heard back from them.
I mean, the twenty-first.
The twenty-first are scheduled, they're not, they're not happening.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's twenty-first.
All right.
It hasn't happened yet.
All right, so I was missing four.
No.
All right, very good, so that hasn't happened yet.
So we were looking at Chikaida strangely.
All right, very good, I, I may have misread it or maybe the information may have been missed. Whatever, excellent. So that was all I had to report. Uh, chief's reports. Doug, we'll let you go first tonight.
Wow.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, motion to approve the chairman's report.
Second.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right, now Doug's chief report.
Uh, for the month of December, we had twenty-six calls, uh, from gas leaks to automatic alarms. Really easy month, not much really to say about that. The one good thing is we got truck four into service as of the new year, the first. Um, and it's already very busy and productive with the truck. Um, it's working out well for us, we used it last night actually. And, um, other than that, there really ain't much to report for, for Stony Hill for that. That's all I got for it.
Are you going to all equipments in service?
All equipments in service, guys, a big turnout with the truck, uh, which actually I would say until a couple people. Since the new truck's been in service, there's been anywhere from fifteen to nineteen guys every single call. Which is kind of, uh, shocking.
Everyone likes shiny stuff.
Uh, and I, and as I keep saying to everybody in the firehouse, I hope that trend continues throughout the whole year. We're dumping the bay for every single call, which is remarkable, and, and all the trucks are full. I mean, people are standing in the back, which is, you know, amazing, so I'm very, very thrilled the way the, you know, eight days have been gone, but we've been, it's been busy.
That's outstanding. So again, I just, with the, with the new software, hopefully we can get, you know, a little more information, information going forward on the chief's reports. You know, as far as like, you know, what trucks respond, how many times each truck responded, million hours and whatnot.
We, I, I think it's gonna take a little.
I know, it's gonna take a little time to get used to it, but.
We, we printed it out off the old software of, uh, for the whole year of, uh, actually how many calls each truck went out to, broke it all the way down for, for every month for you. Um, but the new software is gonna be totally different.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's a, it's a learning curve.
Yeah, I don't know if you're gonna have it, the, the same report as, you know, what, what I have here for, you know, the breakdown of, of everything come next month unless we sit down and really learn how to do it, which is gonna take some time.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I mean, just from our standpoint, we're looking to see how, you know, how often each piece of apparatus responds. You know, helps us, you know, figure out a replacement plan.
Yeah, and Dan, and Dan was also explaining to me that he wanted something like similar to this, what the police department does on a monthly basis, they post on, online, so.
Yeah.
This is, you know, the call.
Yeah, types, types of calls, and it's like, exactly.
We're, we're gonna figure out how to do this and, and make sure it's posted to social media, and then I'll also forward this and try to do, get this on a monthly basis to you also.
That'll be, that would be excellent. The new software doesn't let you apply personnel to each truck?
Yes, and we, and yes, and we can assign them riding positions and.
For each call?
For each single, every call.
So that, that alone would help you with the month, truck, for what, uh, somebody calls, the number of bodies are already on it?
Yeah.
That's just a matter of doing queries.
Yeah, and, but it's a matter of finding it in the, in the system, how to use it. It's still totally different than, than this, so we're still.
I haven't even figured out how to make it stop beating.
There's other talks about that software Tommy's talking about, um, and John could probably fill you in a little bit more with, um, they're talking about possibly going back to the way it used to be where we had one number for both departments, but John can.
So we're finding with the new software.
FDIC number?
Having two FDID numbers for the town is making it difficult because it can't export out the same call to two different, um, splitting it up with two different incident numbers. And with doing that, it looks like we're, we're doing double the, the call volume.
Yeah.
So when they're submitting, um, reports to the state.
Miss, messing up the NFF's reports?
It looks like, you know, um, Stony Hill did, let's say for around numbers, four hundred calls and Bethel did five hundred calls. It looks like the town had nine hundred called. Meanwhile, three hundred of those, both of us went together and with one call.
Right.
So the only place it would hurt is if each individual company wanted to do grants, but you won't have your own F I, uh, FDID number, but when are we gonna be buying, uh, or looking for money for a grant that would benefit both departments? And will do something big? So I don't think that that's too much of a concern, but if we can have one software, one, um, incident report, and then whoever was, um, on the call, each apparatus has its own narrative to write, so you can write what each department did on the call. Every apparatus sign has a narrative to write. The, uh, whoever was in charge, whoever was in command, you can write their, their, uh, narrative, you can have as many narratives per call as you want. So that's not an issue.
But then, I mean, you can make a narrative for each piece of apparatus.
That's what you do, you want to share with each apparatus and then command has, is, which is the overall end of the law.
Yeah, makes sense.
Once you got it in there, it should be.
Yeah, once it flow, if, once we have flowed, the whole system flows good, but there's an issue also with the CAD system doesn't generate all the apparatus.
Right.
So it only generates Bethel's apparatus right now, we can't, you can't get it to generate Stony Hill's. It's still all a work in progress and hopefully they're gonna have it ironed out soon.
Good.
But that's why I don't know if we're gonna be able to generate the same report next month, so you might have to bear with us.
Work in progress.
Yes.
We appreciate the work.
It's great. Really good.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I just, I'd like to thank John for his time served as chief at the fire department. He's gonna continue helping me with all this paperwork and.
Very good, yeah, thank you, John, appreciate the time.
Thanks, John.
All right, chief, yeah?
So we were talking about, everyone's called on it, well, that, on our website, Department of Fire's on our website. You can go, you can see this. Um, the year-end review, total incidents dispatched was two thousand six, two thousand two hundred sixty-three calls. Of that, fire calls were five hundred and twenty-six calls. EMS calls, there was one thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven. The total staffing hours for the volunteers was nineteen thousand two hundred and fifteen hours. That's mostly on the EMS side, some of it is fire, mostly EMS. Total individual training hours, three thousand three hundred and fifty-one hours. Uh, our responses, total member responses, four thousand sixty-three. Average number of responders per call is eight. Structure fires, which includes if we're called out, a town construction fire was twelve. Rush fires were nine, motor vehicle accidents was fifty-six, gas leaks and other emergencies, twenty-three. Futile station coverage went out twenty times for that. And alarm activations, there's a lot, a hundred and thirty-three. So that's, that's the breakdown, and we can certainly do the monthly breakdown that, that, uh, Doug was talking about, that Dan would like to see, that's not an issue. We can put that on the same, the same page.
The, the average number of personnel per call, eight, you said, is that for just fire calls or is that for total calls EMS included?
I believe that that is everything, but I'll have to check for it. I thought, I thought, is it just fire call?
Yeah.
Okay, it's just fire call. Okay? Um.
It seemed like, it seemed like if you were including EMS, they would bring that number down.
Yeah.
Yeah, but she, oh, super cool.
Right, but like I said, the, the staffing hours is a lot of EMS staff hours. Okay, because, you know, during the daytime, just like Stony Hill, we have a big crew. But other than that, it's the volunteers. They got the raise like after work and our weekends and nights and stuff, and staff. And they get credit for that for staff. Um, the other thing is our training is ongoing, we're in January now, so it's all our annual training that needs to be done. Uh, which also includes coming up, uh, this is chief is setting it up, he's been working, setting it up, is the annual, uh, mask test and spirometry and all that stuff is coming. Right? He went and got, uh, he worked hard, got, uh, multiple prices. And, uh, our best price is from the state of Connecticut, so.
And that's already scheduled.
And scheduled.
To both departments.
We're working, we're working together. And just, just like, uh, you guys want to be slightly more.
Yeah, that was two ni-, that was two nights, one night, like, one night.
Yeah, and you, for your other gentlemen that don't know, what, what it is was, it's posted and you sign up. So you're signing up for specific day or night and time and location, whether it's Bethel fire or it's Stony Hill fire. So that you can come in and there's a slot for you to get tested on everything, so that you can go through and do A, B, C.
And we also got invited to Dodge and Town also, so we have three opportunities to get it done. That's one of the mandatory things we have to do, so.
Chris, are you aware that Dodge and Town backed into the Bay Area last night?
I was not.
Oh, yeah, Ron backed into the, the Tankers Bay War last night, again.
Not told that. Hopefully it's still open.
It's the, okay, minor campus.
They got right out to cover, so we had a structure fire, Doug was in charge last night. Outside of the building, it up into the attic for it.
Yeah, Brandon, it started in the chimney and ran the whole thing into the attic. And honestly, if we were on our way downtown to the gas ball, a couple more minutes.
That would have been.
I understand the neighbor, neighbor called, the homeowner.
The, the owner next door called the homeowner.
Didn't even, didn't even know, didn't see it.
I see fire. She's like, where? Inside of your house.
And it literally was, it was in the attic, it was, it was starting to go, once it got into the attic, it would have been. It would have been a blast.
Uh, she was also very happy at the end, she came out, thanked everybody, and she was very happy. She said, I know there's some damage, but it could have been a lot worse, I really appreciate it, and worked out well. And a lot of people on scene from Bethel and Stony Hill, we worked together, got the job done, and cleaned up and went home. It's really, uh, it's really, yeah, I don't really have a lot, I mean, that's, like I said, when in January, so it's all the mandatory annual stuff that we're doing now. Anything we can do with Stony Hill, we will.
Yeah, I'll leave it up to, to Doug, but I, I would assume, I, I don't know, you want these, all these reports in paper file, or you want maybe a digital format?
Paper is nice to discuss here at the meeting.
Yeah, it is.
Could we bring one piece of paper instead of printing, you know, twenty copies of it?
You can, you can send the one piece of paper to Casey ahead of time, and she can make copies. She's really good at that.
Or you can email it to you and you can just.
Yeah, absolutely, I file it, I file the agenda on Monday and usually send out all of the documents for the meeting that same day. Um, if not, I did it this week on Tuesday, so as long as I do it before the meeting, I can send all the information out. So, yeah, just get it to me like a day or two before the meeting and that.
Yeah, so you can send it to her digitally, and she can.
It does, it costs us each, it costs us money to print paper at the time of fire.
But if we get to a point where we know exactly what's gonna be repetitive month after month, which is previous months on, uh, reports, then that's gonna be easy enough, but as long as we know from the chairman, if you want something over and above the, the same monthly reports, just let us know and then we'll gather that.
Yep.
Give it to, you know, even if it's before the agenda is posted, so that we get it to Casey before the agenda is posted, so she'll have the attachments to go with it.
Well, I mean, I think Dan probably spoke, spoke to you guys about, you know, what he'd like to say.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I mean, I had the same conversation with him, so.
I'm used to that because seniors on the police commission, we did a lot of the, this stuff that he's talking about. But, so he's seen it from them, we can certainly do the same thing.
And so I, I, I agree, you know, for reading purposes, it's nice to see it on paper, so if you guys can send it to Casey digitally, you know, ahead of time, she can print it out there.
I'm, I like it on paper, and like I told you guys, I printed this bigger because it's easier to read, because those are smooth minds, it's brutal. Um, Bill, I'd just like to tell you quickly about the three prices we got to show you how much we're really digging. I'm sure Stony Hill's doing the same thing to get a good price.
Yeah, chairman, but we spoke last month about going out to bed, I took what you said very seriously. And, you know, we brought up a specific figure of approximately fifteen hundred, and the, like, to see it's got to get multiple prices. We did that, but all of you got it, nice. Um, we got three quick prices, uh, one from AAA White Plains, one from M E S, which is the old shipments, and the third price was State Fire CAD.
But we, we used M E S last year.
Great. And they were competitive. It was fifty per head, forty-five per head, both charging a two hundred dollar gasoline surtax to driving up here, and the third one from the state we got seventy-five dollars an hour.
An hour?
So we were able to save.
Run them through quick.
So the bottom line, we saved over two thousand dollars. It's awesome, I'd have built it, would have been over three thousand. So seventy-five times, uh, you know, let's say ten hours, man, in total. And we won't run over those, those dates, uh, those times we put in for the signup, because we're really, we're short about fire slots. We started to stay late that one night, so, uh, you know, seven hundred and fifty dollars instead of over three thousand.
Yeah, man, that's, I, I used to use the state when I was chief, I used to get, I used to do it five hundred dollars for two nights.
Yeah, fifty dollars ahead of the cheaper for us to buy the machine herself.
Yeah.
To do it.
Yeah, we talked about that in the past, too.
I, I also did get a quote on the machine. Machine is nine thousand dollars now, and you can get a five-year warranty for service.
And it becomes obsolete in six.
For another thousand dollars. But when you, when you get that service contract, uh, for the annual recalibration, that's the ship to Alabama and then back to your expense. So.
They don't do it here.
Using a fire academy for seventy-five an hour, it's just. And you get all the updates, they stay on top, they just update it all the time, so.
Yeah, it sounds like a little brain.
All right, I have to excuse myself, I, I have to go to another meeting.
Like the everybody.
Thank you.
He's always running.
I know.
Anything else, Chris?
Um, no, you'll, you'll see in the budget when we talk about that, that I tried to stay as loose as I could. You know, I take seriously what you say, you know, try and save what you can save, so. We can discuss that when you guys want to discuss it.
Uh, motion to, uh, approve the chief's reports.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Consideration of a vacancy on the commission. Do you have anything yet?
Nope.
What's the slot?
Tony Rubino's, uh.
First Republican slot.
Yeah.
Kevin, what do you? Sorry.
All right, I guess we'll save that again. Motion to table consideration of vacancy. Second, is it, Rick?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, consideration review of the November and December financials. We had, we had to look at the November because last month we had last year's by mistake. We should, we should have, we should have the both November and December of the current fiscal year. If they have a chance to look at them. Any questions?
There's one thing in the depth of once, the tires are still in.
Yeah, that's on two, I talked to Brad. The reason the tires are in there is because when I brought it to you folks, you folks then needed to take it to the board of selection, which I didn't know, I'm sure you guys knew. They approve it and then they take it from there to the board of finance, because that wasn't done, it stayed in budget. Because typically you put it in budget and then it comes out, it gets taken out of the budget.
We did take it to the board of selection.
I'm just telling you what was explained to me, so something got dropped somewhere, I don't think it was in this room.
It got, it got forwarded to the selectmen and, and to the comptroller.
Because I actually asked if we could get that back because of the state. And it wasn't a mistake that I made, or I don't believe you gentlemen made.
So for future reference, if there's something in, in the capital, it has to go, it has to go before the board of finance to get approved before it gets expended. So if you want to spend any money that's, you know, in the capital, you know, you, you guys. Theoretically, we've already, you know, put it to capital and approved it, so it has to go to, you know, selectmen, and then they select, we gotta send it to the board of finance to get prior.
Now, I, I am waiting on the price for engine six, because I'm trying to do it this year. Waiting on that price, hopefully I'll get that tomorrow. And I was thinking, you want to put that into my, my frame? Only question, because that's what we did last time with SWAT, was we were flat today, over time, I'm sorry. Remember, Rich actually brought that up. That's the only thing I want to do. All the tires have actually been done.
I don't know, I know I sent the tire plan to the, uh, the comptroller, if you say engine six is in there, it's, it's in there. I, I, and what I did with it is I took the cost of the tower's tires.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, obviously I reduced it less tire, but I, I used the tire, you know, the cost of the tires, and I think I did like a four percent increase.
I believe that's what.
Something like that.
So, but.
So there should be more than enough money.
Give me the actual.
Right.
And, and it's all stated anyways.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have it here somewhere for.
You know, so you're, you're looking at six tires, you know, you know, discounted amount. And then come to us, they do it right there in the back.
All right.
It is a shame, they're in good shape.
Yeah, so I, I, I imagine that money's probably gonna stay there until we get to the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if we, if we come up six thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars short at the end of the year, then we'll have to address it at that point.
But that's what happened, just so now we're all on the same page, we know, you know, we gotta make sure that comes through you guys and it goes through them, and then we, I guess we gotta follow up, right, make sure it goes.
Yeah, the, the, the capital money has to have the board of finances approved before it gets spent. Anybody else have any other questions?
Uh, just curiosity, Chris, uh, you had two hundred and twelve thousand roughly in, in your budget, and we've only spent sixty-five thousand, aren't you? Why are you holding back so much?
We're not holding back, it's just, it's just the way you, it's always the way you spend it, you know? You know, you hold back, and the other thing is, you gotta remember that none of the annual inspections and works been done on any of the apparatus yet. That's a big.
That's towards the end of the.
That's a big chunk of money, that's like May, May, June, when we do that, we try and, when I took over.
That's the big part of their budget, Rich, they, they got their, you know, their annual vehicle inspection, pump test, hose test.
Okay, that's just in a month, in a year that it hasn't fallen in yet.
It's all annual, Rich, when I took over, it was all kind of spread out willy-nilly, and we kind of got it all back together where it's, we know it's in May, June, right before the end of the budget, so we, you know, we, we try to be very conservative with that account. Because we know, you know, as they get older, you're using more.
All right, well, that's good to know that.
Yeah.
A lot of it is unexpect, unexpended because it's not time for the inspections yet, but you know, if I was a board of finance member looking at this and saying, why are you only spending for the first six months of the year?
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, thinking, you know, with pump tests, vehicle tests, ladder tests, hose test, I mean, we're probably talking like eighty thousand dollars, you know, to a department.
And each pump, that's a wet test, they actually pump, they pump the trucks to make sure water flows through it, because some places do air. And we, we had one place that said they could do it with air, I'm like. Do it through water. That's, you know, G K, both departments use G K, everything goes there and they do every, all the tests are all the same, how about the apparatus? Which is good.
Any thoughts?
Nope.
All those in favor of accepting consideration of the November and December financials for both departments?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Consideration of the department budget proposals. Who do you want to start out with, Stony Hill? Well, I have no feeling so embarrassed. I've got a better guess. All right. So that, last month we talked briefly about just taking that, that big chunk number out of the, um, equipment and retention.
Yeah, I thought we said last, last, um, month or two, we were keeping it in, we were gonna try and push it through for our retention program, so that's why.
You know, I mean, I, I, I don't want to say that we're not gonna have some, have that money somewhere, I, I think in, in talking with Dan in prior months, um, he had talked about having that money allocated somewhere else within the town budget other than, than the fire department budgets. He, he was talking about creating.
Fine by me, they does look better.
It's okay by me.
All right, I mean, you know, you're talking about increasing your budget by thirty-six thousand dollars, you know, on line. If he wants to show thirty-six thousand dollars somewhere else in the town budget.
No, somewhere else, that's fine. I think the only danger is if we don't include it and it disappears somewhere in the discussion, right? Easy to just wipe it away. That made my own fear.
And, oh, like making you leave it and let them move it where they want to put it? Yeah, I agree.
Those in front of them, and I agree with you, because otherwise, they don't see it. Right. They won't discuss it. Right.
I, I choose to ignore.
Yeah, well, just fine, as long as they see it.
It's not. It's a debatable thing. With a number and everything, like, you know, firehouse retention and just.
I think a green line out of, sure. Yeah, but there's nothing taking it.
Yeah, I understand, take it, take it completely out of the fire department, but put a new line, new line item in there, just that number, would, would, you know, that P O number.
Yes. I don't, my personal suggestion would be that we keep it in that line it's in, like, we show it, if they say, hey, we don't like this here, or ask what it is, but if you say, what do you want? That's just my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's definitely gonna draw a, a huge question mark with the board of finance, I mean, when they, it seems goes, the line goes from three thousand dollars to thirty-seven, thirty-five, seven-twenty, that's.
Well, I mean, it's explanatory.
Yeah, no, I mean, Doug will be able to explain it, I'm sure.
I would say what I just said, right, that's, that's what it is.
I agree.
All right, so, so just explain, I don't know, John or Doug, whichever one of you wants to, just explain how you came up with that number one more time, I know you explained it last month, but.
We, we took the, the number of people that were on each call, for every call, for the fiscal, um, twelve months, last twelve months, and add times it by ten for the ten dollars per call.
And add times it by 10 for the $10 per call. But I think we actually increased it knowing that. The call volume was going to increase in the, uh, the membership has increased this year over last year.
Yeah, we, you have, you have last year at 3222.
Correct. And I think we had put in for 48.
Well, you put in for 3377.
Right. But I think.
I think Richard was saying that probably asked for a little bit more. I think we raised it to 40.
That's correct. There's that portion going in.
I believe you did.
So you're recommending that we, we, we increase that line item to 40,000?
Yes.
Yeah. Ours, ours would be 40, 40, 630.
Hold on to that until we get to yours.
No, I'm just saying, I just.
Alright, so I, I, we want to make a motion to in- increase that line. From 33770 to 40,000. Is that how we want to handle it? Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll make the motion that we increase the, the recruitment retention line in the Stony Hills dues and education account. From 33770 to 40,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Um. Going back to the equipment and supplies account. I know the board of finance reduced your turnout gear last year from seven, from eight sets to seven sets. I, I, I know you're asking for eight sets again this year. 16, nearly a $16,000 increase over last year's.
Yeah.
Seven sets.
We had, just, uh, within the last month, well, we had about. How many people need to join?
Four, we bought four sets.
No, I mean, membership.
Oh, we have, uh, like one, two. Three. Yeah, we got like eight or nine new members that just joined. And we have no more turnout. We have, I went two sets of turnout gear left in the back. And we're taking turnout gear from people that haven't been responding and giving that to the new people that are walking in the door. And this stuff's aging out too. There's one kid in fire one and I, I was already told for his fire one practical, he needs a new coat. It's gonna be outdated by the time he. So we're.
And even some of the top responders have given up their second set for you.
How many people do you have that have two sets of turnout gear?
It would be all the top guys have it.
When, when you say a top guy.
All the officers. And then the top responders that. So there's four or five of them. There's probably 10 of us that all have two sets of gear. If not more. I'd have to literally sit there. Yeah. If you say 15 of, of, and I would honestly have to sit there and go through. The computer and pull, you know, basically run a report and sit there and figure it out.
Might be worth getting it down on something like to do with the bottles, just so we have it. Not gonna be a huge science project for.
And that, it's just gonna add more, you know.
But it's hard, right? Like when we say we need this and then why? Well, we sort of think it's this, you know what I mean? Like we have it in paper and it's like, hey, we have.
Well, it's never gonna be an exact science because just a couple of years ago, Chief McCollum came to, and said, we need emergency. Uh, funding to buy more gear because we have more members against gear, right? And it's always a possibility. But eight sets of gear seems to have been about the magic number to. To either replenish, uh, outdated gear or to outfit new members.
And the shocker is, is just that the amount that the gear is going up. It's, it's, and it's not gonna stop.
I, you know.
That's why I supplied last year the quote that we got for the cost of gear. Um, and what it's going up to. That's how it came over that number.
You know, the other problem is, and I talked about it before, everyone's got a shelf life. It's all 10 years now, which, you know. Back when, when we started, it wasn't. You could buy helmets in stock. 15, 20 helmets.
Coaches got coaches ten year, ten years.
They didn't have a 10 year.
Shoulder.
They were there. They were brand new. It was, you know. Hand them out, right? Can't do that anymore. It's.
Not to mention damage at Kohl's.
Absolutely.
So, so Doug, you see, you're buying gear as needed or are you buying, you buying all at once? What, what are you doing?
We're buying, we'll take, we'll take whoever has the whole of the setting gear. And we'll buy them the new, we'll buy them new sets. We'll buy five or six. And we're giving the new members that are walking in the door, old stuff that's, you know, two or three years.
Yeah, no, right. I know. I, I, I thought I heard you just say you, you already bought four sets.
We just bought four sets for Tony Rubino. Um, another guy. We, we bought four sets for, for new members that joined.
So you still, you still have money, you still have money left in your budget for three more sets.
We still have money left in our budget this current year to buy more.
So you don't, oh, eventually buy them for the size of a person.
The date that that gear is going out of service. So when budget season comes up, I, I ask. You know, gear lieutenant, how many sets of gear are going out of service this year that we need to be replaced? Okay, so then I have a ballpark figure and again, it's usually about, uh, four or five. Then we'll still have, uh, sets for either new members or if we didn't get the new members, getting the second set of gear that we need. So the eight sets get used and it's not that it's, um, surplus. But if there is a need for somebody coming in, we can take back a, a second set of, uh, new gear, but we've been doing that and. Right now, we just found out from the gear lieutenant that we don't have any gear left over. There's maybe one or two sets that. Would still be considered in service to be able to be issued out.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I mean, I, I think Abe was always the number I think I always put in as well as.
You know, and now that he turn around time, it takes a lot of time to get gear. For somebody that's walking in the door, it's nice to have one, a, a couple of hand me down sets available in the gear.
Is it really $520 for a pair of boots now?
Oh, yeah. More than that.
Blows my mind. Well, it can't be more than that because that's what you showed me. $519.
Yeah.
Can't be more. Alright, well, um. Is everybody? Okay with, uh, keeping the, the number at eight with, with the $15,850 increase?
Delete it.
Yeah, they need them.
Alright, any other questions on Stony Hill's budget?
And I did get the price on the, uh, third party aerial testing. I was like.
I'm sorry.
The, uh, third party aerial testing.
Oh, we have.
$1,900.
We need to add that into your 208, right? $1,900?
Correct.
Alright, so. I'll take a motion to add $1,900 into the 208 account for, um, third party aerial ladder testing.
Thank you very much for that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Equipment and supplies. That's a pretty, that's a $21,000 increase. What's the, uh, what's the big increase there, chief? Yeah. Hmm? It was just the gear. Well, not, not just. $16,000 for gear. Still $5,000 more somewhere. Oh, you got $2,000, an extra $2,000 for hose.
Oh, that was for the two inch hose.
That was the first thing of it.
Right. And that, that includes returning what you borrowed from Bethel, right?
Yeah, that's returning Bethel. Well, Bethel, we just give Bethel the new.
I just want to make, I just want it all to be clear to Doug when he has to go present this. Alright, so let's see here. Do a little quick, quick math, baby. They're, uh, looking to, to increase the bottom line on the, on Stony Hill budget. Let's see, it would be. 6,000. 230. 1,230 plus 1,900. So if my math is correct, we're 8130, an increase over, over the bottom line request. Is that correct? Sounds right.
I want a motion to add the 8130 to it first and then the bottom line.
Yep. How, how about a motion, motion to increase the Stony Hills bottom line budget request of. 255, 620. Increase it. By $8,130. Makes sense?
Uh, fine, Mr. Chairman or. I, I, I think you should say what the 8130 is for first in the motion. For the. Third party in this inspection of the ladder.
Well, it was $1,900 for the third.
And then the 62 for the.
Uh, we already made the motion on the, on the 62, right?
They already put the increase for the incentive program.
Right. Alright, so, so a motion to, and we made a, we made the motion to increase the vehicle maintenance account by $1,900, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we got the, we got the.
Okay, alright, as long as those are specified.
Alright, so, so the motion should be to increase the bottom line spending of the. Stony Hills requested budget of 255, 620. Increase it by $8,130.
263, 750.
To 263, 750. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. What was that number again? 263, 750. Alright, gentlemen. Alright. Alright, Stony Hills, Doc. Alright, so Bethel is requesting. $228,952 and that does not include any paper recruitment, right? There's no, there's no line item in here.
No.
So we, we want, we want to add that in and you said you had a number for that?
Uh, 40,636. Would be the total. That'd be the total.
Hold on. Where do we? What account do we put that in?
Put it in, uh. Use an.
Use an.
Use an.
So we'd be adding.
What was the number again? 40.
I thought you said it was 40, Chris. 46.
46. Yeah, I think it's. Yeah. Just here. Yeah, total memory responses was 40, 4,063. So if you're doing $10 for, for member responding, right? Is that the equation you did, Chief?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's 40,063, right? Or 40,630.
630, yeah.
Added to. The.
Added to the 26,000.
Which is flat. I looked at flat.
Alright, so a motion to increase Bethel's dues and education account. From 26,000. To 66,630.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Professional services had a $2,500 increase and that was basically just the physicals.
Yes, because again, the, the amount of people we got coming in. We gotta cover them. Uh, you'll see, I, I did either, if there's, if there's a number there, it's not a. Nothing in front of it, then that's a plus. If there's a minus, then that's the minus. Cause some stuff came out. Some stuff was added. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't put it in the right order. I, I took my staple out, but mine don't fit before. So equipment and supplies, which is 202 account. Okay. Most of it stayed the same. Add a $250 to the sensors in the gas canisters because it's just ridiculous that the. Stuff and we're replaced. Those sensors are expensive. Uh, and we do that in-house. So we're saving money there. We're not sending them out. We have people that can do it in-house. I took out the masks because as we talked previously, there are 12 airbags still out there ordered that are coming with masks. So I took that out. Station wear uniforms, t-shirts, caps. Um, I was stunned this past year and the cost. So I added 1,500 there, brought it up to 6,000. From 45. The gear I added 5,000. We should be able to do okay with that. Uh, the Peritech gold struts, I was telling Fred earlier, I, I assume you guys want to take that, that out of here. But I put it in there so that you see it. And that's, we have the smaller, the smaller equipment. These are the larger struts. So if you get an oil truck that rolls over, a dump truck, tool bus. Brain incident. We have the right struts to brace it in. So hopefully get the people out.
Yeah, I believe you already have a request for that in your commit capital.
Yeah.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we remove 14,000 from the, uh, equipment and supplies account. And the, the line item being the Peritech gold struts.
Right.
Cause that's already accounted for. All those in favor?
Aye.
The rope.
Opposed? Carry.
Okay, the rope, the rope equipment. Was more expensive as we moved, because you're doing this now and then. You're getting, you're getting more than one increase now. So. To finish it off totally. Need approximately $1,500 and that'll finish it with some things we couldn't buy that we. Put aside and bought what we did buy. That finishes off the rope equipment on all the rigs. The other stuff stayed the same there as you can see. So there was a slight increase in this account. You'll see as we move on, there's other accounts that stay flat. So the 207 account, firehouse maintenance.
Hold on, let's, let's stay on the equipment and supplies. If my math is correct. By removing that 14,000, that reduces the.
Yeah.
Uh, total request to 73,726. Anybody want to double check my math?
That math is good.
And math is good. So.
Same. So it's basically there.
So, so a motion to, uh. Well, we made the motion to re- remove the 14,000. A motion to, uh, fund the equipment and supplies account in the amount of 73,726.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Alright, where were you going now, chief?
Okay, uh, firehouse maintenance.
Firehouse maintenance.
Okay. Uh, the town did replace the kitchen hood. It was brand new. It was functioning properly. Um, the only thing was. He didn't tell me last year that he raised his prices by $50. There's two cleanings per year. So that's why you see two times by 50 each. So I added a hundred dollars there. That should cover the two cleanings. Per year that he does. Uh, the kitchen cleaning was taken. Uh, the kitchen cleaning was taken out last year, I just put it there. At zero, so you see it's not there anymore. The others, the others all stay the same.
Your math is off, Chief.
Yeah.
Your, uh, your bold request should be sixteen four, not sixteen three.
Yes, that's me, sorry about that.
So, a motion to correct the chief's math and, uh, fund the firehouse maintenance account in the total amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Sorry, my finger was just left.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? So carry.
Vehicle maintenance. There's only two things there that would change, the subbit service came in higher than the two thousand last. Past budget. I accounted for that within the budget, but I put it in there this year, so it is there. It was just under twenty five hundred dollars, so. And accounts for that. And the climate event annual cleaning service and repairs, I added five hundred because we have several boots, I'm sure. Brad, you guys seen them, there's a couple of them that are squaring off. They're gonna have to be replaced, the rubber boots. So that should cover. Them being replaced for making it to the annual service. Everything else? Stands sent. Um, the only thing I'll say, I said it last year, I'm gonna get on my soapbox again. I think everything from manual hole, testing of holes down. Should be in its own account. Its own number, because those are all service contracts.
Yeah, you know, years ago, Chief, when I was, I I had moved all those into professional services.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it fit better in professional services. Then Scott moved it back and.
But, yeah, I mean, I just, I just think it should really have its own accounting, it's for service.
Right, well, yeah, exactly, and why I moved it to professional services. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I could talk to Brad about that.
Doesn't make sense that it's here.
I mean, it's just an accounting thing, wouldn't, wouldn't account, you take it out, but it should be the same for both departments. And we shouldn't have to, you know, shouldn't be in Doug's vehicle maintenance account and your professional services.
Right, that's, that's why I bring it up.
So, I don't know, with the, whatever Doug or Brad wants to do with it.
One note for you gentlemen, too, air compressor service in Pasadena. It's outrageous what they charge. Sam, I think you've all met, Paul Ritchie, I think you guys have met Sam, the first agent. He's working on, he's researching that for me and see if we can find somebody else that will give us a price. Um, it all comes down to the equipment that we have. Cause if they don't sell it, they don't want to work on it.
That's what, quarterly testing?
Yes.
Yeah, it's quarterly testing.
Right, there's an annual service on the compressors, but there's quarterly air sampling.
They do the quarterly air sampling in the, the maintenance, they also do our, um. Air compressor for the bay.
Yeah.
You know, who changes on that as well.
Yeah. And then they send you via email, they send you and you print out. It's this size, you print it out and put up that it was tested in the past.
Wait, are you still using air compressor engineering?
Yes.
Yes, we both are.
Yeah, cause as well, they, uh, sold us the, uh.
Sold us the equipment, yeah.
They did, exactly, so you're kind of, you're kind of locked in. So we're trying to see if there's somebody else out there that will do it. That will give us a better price where maybe. Even if they stay with us, maybe they'll come down a little bit. Something out of that price, so I don't know.
We can negotiate a better price.
You know.
So, as we come down and service them both the same day.
Well, that's the other thing, because they charge travel.
Yeah.
They charge a little mileage, I like that.
They don't spend all day at one fire department, so they gotta do. I don't know.
Yeah, the air testing, I think they do the same day, depending on, I mean, the, the, both compressors are fairly, you know, I can't imagine the maintenance repairs.
No, they're pretty good.
They come in, they change the oil and then, and they filter some. They're already doing, make sure they're not charging.
I mean, we had one issue recently with the handle. With lock in, but that was, that was repaired very easily, it took care of it.
What trucks you got coming up that have to have their, uh, brakes inspected this year?
I believe. And I could be wrong. Um, I left that in there till I can double check. I believe it was the. Tower.
You just did what, N six?
Yeah, yeah. There was the tower and the. Rescue or the tanker. It's one of them. But I'll double check it, cause if we don't need it, we don't need it. I don't know if it's a now for sure. But is it the tires aren't in here, but. We're all aware of the tire, if you have the schedule for the tires, right, it sucks. Might be the rescue. I'll double check with Dave.
In vehicle maintenance, there's, there's a, a typo or an additional error. On, uh, compliance inspection. Prior year was thirty four, eight forty four. Requested is thirty eight, eight forty four, it's a four thousand dollar difference, but it's not reflected. Is it's a difference, so is it a typo?
No, no, it's a typo, sorry about that.
So what, what's?
It's thirty, it's the same.
It's just thirty four.
Yeah, it's the same, like I told you, I tried to keep it as flat as I could. The overall, the overall budget without that fourteen thousand in there. Is twenty seven hundred and eighty three additional dollars. So.
Tight, it's, it's, you take that out and you take this, what we did to dues and education, it's.
Yeah.
It's spot on.
Kept it tight, so, yeah, when you add in the dues and education, you know, the. The pay, then it goes up, but other than that, overall, it's twenty seven eighty three without that, that one line.
Yep.
I kept it as straight as I could, I though. Um, the professional services, gentlemen. You'll see. First due, and then over in the notes, it just, I just. Put in replacement emergency reporting, we say, well, that's what that is. So the money is still there, it's supposed to be switched to a different provider. And the physicals, as Fred mentioned, your doors is the only thing that I actually increased money on in that account. By twenty five hundred dollars.
So again, if my math is correct. The total budget request, uh, reflecting the changes that we just recommended, should be two fifty five, six eighty two.
Alright.
Do you want to double check that?
I got two fifty six oh thirty two.
I, I took his requested number of two twenty.
Two twenty eight, nine fifty two.
Nine fifty two. And then I.
Take, take away the fourteen thousand.
And added forty thousand, six thirty for recruitment retention. And. I subtracted. Fourteen thousand. The, uh, paratech struts. And I added one hundred dollars, it was, uh. Yeah, a typo in the firehouse maintenance account. And I come up with two fifty five, six eighty two.
That's what I get, yeah, me too, I'll go with you on that.
Alright, so my math was correct?
It was.
The chairman's was wrong?
You're still the chairman.
Very good, alright, so I'll make a motion that we recommend. A. Bottom line budget request for the Bethel Fire Department in the amount of. Two hundred and fifty five thousand, six hundred and eighty two dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Closed? So carry. Alright. So, an overall motion to approve the consideration of the department budget process. Your second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? So carry. Alright, consideration of member incentives. We, we kind of addressed that a little bit with the, uh, adding the money in the budgets, the forty thousand and the, what, what, whatever, the. The big numbers on the recruitment and retention accounts, um, I think it'll also see us recommend the, um. Taking, taking the maximum advantage of the tax payment is allowable by Connecticut statute.
I think it's, that would be dead.
Which would be the. The only stipulation I would put on that is that the two departments have to come up through, come up with a mutual agreement on what the, uh, qualification for.
Yeah, cause you're talking about making it available maybe after the first year and, and certified itself.
Yeah, I mean, I think it should, it should be, yeah, I mean, we shouldn't be giving it to probationary members, and I, I, I think they should be certainly be for certified personnel. And, and talking with Dan, I mean, I, he, he's really, um. Call number focused on it. Um, yeah, I understand there's, there's a lot of value to, you know, the time that people commit to the department, whether it's for training, PR events, uh, you know, and. All kinds of, you know, hours that are developed, I mean, I. What the taxpayers looking at is, I call nine one one, somebody shows up to my house, so. I will make a motion that we recommend to the selectmen that the. Volunteer fire departments be afforded the maximum benefit of the tax abatement. So long as the two departments can come up with a mutually agreeable. Uh.
Standard.
Standard for approb, uh. Qualification.
I would second that Doug has a.
Yep, alright, so there's a motion, there's a second, is there a discussion?
Uh, we have to include the out of town people too. Some way, somehow.
Is. How is it, is that addressed in the standard, in the, in the statute, the Connecticut statute? I don't know that that's addressed on statute. Other towns. Will send a check. To the resident. Yeah. So that, uh. Others don't, they give you a, they give you a check and then they tell them. Those are the two options.
I mean, the, um, the town where the firefighter lives, if they can. Give. The town of Bethel, that, um, firefighter's tax obligation. To justify the amount that would be, um, eligible, and then that Bethel would pay that town, and it would be deducted from their, their taxes.
Yeah, it's not.
That way you're not getting any.
Well, yeah, it goes right to the town. It goes, it goes to the town.
Right, they set it up that way on purpose.
But the towns have to agree.
Yes. Yep.
Alright, so, somebody want to make the motion to amend my motion, or you just want to make all new motions?
No, you amend it, you can amend your own.
So I'll, I'll draw my second. Now you're gonna amend your motion. Alright. Don't write it down yet until I say. And then you can. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the selectmen. That the volunteer fire departments be afforded the maximum benefit. Allowed, allowable. Under the tax, the tax payments, under the general statute for the tax abatement. Go ahead, Chief.
Can I ask you something? Maybe within that where you started, you might want to put something about. All members who are eligible. That kind of covers everybody. Cause you're gonna go by the statute, right?
Yeah.
Which would cover people out of town.
Right, I think operationally, though, town, the towns have to figure out how they're gonna do that, right? I don't think we can prescribe that that's gonna happen. Right, there's gonna be some, some back and forth about how, how Bethel can handle.
And I think we have to get some kind of documentation of how the state statute's written before we even make, before you even make a motion. Because it could say something probably different than what we're saying.
I would suggest the motion should say we are, we would recommend the selectmen to, uh, allow a maximum benefit. And we will investigate provisions to allow out of town members to participate in that. That gets at least the ball, gets the ball rolling and. Further investigation of how to solve the out of town.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I remember how to say it again. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the selectmen to allow the, uh, departments to take advantage of the maximum tax abatement. And then we investigate provisions to allow out of town members to participate in.
Makes sense.
With a mutually agreeable. Has to be mutually agreeable for the qualification.
Right, with a mutually agreeable qualification. Didn't really establish that. We talked about it loosely, like we said, oh, it should be a threshold of this and that.
And just give everybody the maximum once they meet that first year and the.
It's, um, it's the threshold we didn't decide on, what they called, was it a percentage, what's the, is it an absolute number?
I mean, the max, the maximum benefit is, is two thousand dollars.
Right.
And, and it's. For anybody, it's in perpetu, in perpetuity for anybody that has twenty five years of service. Up to, and, and it's up to their maximum, um, tax liability.
Right.
If you only have a five hundred dollar tax liability, you only get five hundred dollars.
Eligibility is, um, a minimum of one year of service and, uh, certified. Now it's just a matter of, once you've met that requirement, to be able to, um, take advantage of it, you have to make. X number of calls, right, that's where.
That's the missing piece.
Determining what.
It's either X number of calls or X percentage of calls.
Cost, because both departments do not have the same call line. So it's gotta be percentage basis, whether ten percent is the right number. I think that's what we're kind of hovering on, but we also look at the number of people out based on service.
So with the part where it gets tricky is, is, is. You know, you, you have members that are EMS only, you have members that are fire only, you know, I mean, are you doing ten percent of the total call volume for everybody, or I mean.
Years ago, we did certifications. Which is something you can look at too. They have to do a year, and to be certified as an EMT. It's certified as a firefighter.
Well, if you go by percentage, you would have to make a percentage of the calls that you're certified to go on. So if you have, if you're EMS, then you have to go on ten percent EMS calls, if you're fire, you have to go on ten percent firefighters.
You do that.
Yeah, but I mean, everybody in Stony Hills is dual certified, so you have to.
Well, then that's a great benefit, because then you have to go on, um, ten percent of the total calls EMS and fire company.
That's a lot of calls.
Yeah.
We do.
Sounds like you had a trailer there, ladder four with new seating, extra seating in the back now.
What's, what was we doing? I, I don't, I mean, I. Personally, I mean, I always thought a hundred calls was a very reasonable number.
Quick raw math, we did, you know, twelve hundred calls, EMS calls, and you did, uh. Uh, we did maybe, let's say around over three hundred calls, fifteen hundred calls, we're talking about a hundred fifty calls to get the tax abatement, I mean, that's, that's. Doable and, but is it realistic for a lot of people?
Yeah, I, I, to me, I, I. I mean, I, personally, I always thought a hundred calls was a reasonable number, I mean, we're getting a hundred, a hundred calls out of a volunteer, I, I think we're. Pretty good shit.
Not if you're a fire only. Cause we only get three hundred figured out and doing a third of calls.
But who's a post-fire only in Stony Hill? I thought, I thought you violated everybody to be dual certified.
It is, but it's tough to get that to happen based on either the, um. Tests, you know, the classes to be available, or. We're having trouble getting some of these guys to pass.
Well, again, that's why I say it has to be some mutually agreeable. You know.
I don't know.
Between the two departments.
Yeah, we might not solve it here.
Yeah, right, I mean.
Can visit rate on it and come up with what that threshold is.
Right, that's why I say that the recommendation should just be that. We recommend it full, taking full advantage of it. So long as the two departments can come up with a mutually agreeable solution.
Yeah.
He'll get some information from some of the towns at. At this program.
Oh, what the eligibility is for a tax.
Yeah, how they work it out.
From what I see, most of them do it on a, on a, a call number basis, some of them do it, you know, they add in, I mean, they. When we first started it, we used to give, uh, credit for certification, we used to give you credit for going to a parade. Yeah, it was a point system, you had to get, I think you had to get.
Cause you got credit for being an officer because you were doing more work.
And you had to accumulate like two hundred and fifty points or something.
Yeah, it made you a point, I think it was two fifty.
Yeah, it was like, it was like one point per call, but then you could get, you know, a point for being at all, you know, sort of. Yeah, it was like, it was like one point per call, but then you could get, you know, a point for being, you know, certain amount of points for being an officer, certain amount of points to go and do certain events, points.
Certain amount of points for each certification you had, and then you maintained it.
Because you almost need some sort of incentive to get people to come out to events.
And if it's a class, it's be, you gotta take classes, be certified, to be able to go into this program.
How'd you guys work it out?
We're, yeah, look it out. I, I, I think, I think we should make the recommendation that it, that it gets funded, so long as you guys can work it out. You guys work it out, come back to us next month with what you worked out.
Might be easier than doing it in the form like this.
We could go online.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, so did you?
There's a motion on the floor.
You actually had a motion that was seconded?
No, it was not seconded. It was not seconded.
Is there a second? Alright, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. So carry. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Nobody's opposed?